Good morning. San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting of March twenty second, twenty twenty-three will please come to order. Please rise and join me for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please, Janet?
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner Saranakwan.
There.
And presented by Monowitz, Fox, Montez, and Segura. Thank you.
Next, we have oral communications. At this time, members of the public may speak on any matter that is not on today's agenda. Do we have any speakers? Janet, could you please explain the process?
Sure. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we'll use the raise hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on our regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment, please raise your hand. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raise hand function. When you hear your name called, we will promote you and you can unmute your microphone at that time. And you will have five minutes. So right now, I do see someone with their hands up. We have. Ms. Langauer.
Good morning. Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I just wanted to say thank you to the staff and and the tech people who have enabled you to have remote meetings for the hybrid form of meeting so that the public can attend remotely. We really, I think a lot of people really appreciate that and I had asked the Board of Supervisors to continue to do this for the Planning Commission on the Board. So I just wanted to say thank you and good morning. It has been a really wild day yesterday and last night here in Ladera. So thank you very much.
If you have a comment. I don't want to see any more hands raised for this item, Chair. And I do not see anybody from the chambers.
Chambers either.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so seeing nobody else, I would close the public hearing or close the oral communications at this time. We move on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes from March eighth meeting for approval. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes as drafted and written for the March eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Roll call, Janet.
Commissioner Hanson.
I.
Commissioner Ramirez.
I.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Commissioner Saranakwan.
Hi.
Commissioner Gupta.
I.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the regular agenda. Let me just. So could you please read that for the record, Janet? Could we read that in?
First, we have San Mateo County as owner applicant. San Mateo County Parks Department, file number PLN two zero two minus zero zero four eight five. Location, zero nine oh one, O'Neal Highway.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. This item is a follow-up to your approval of the Tenetus Creek Beach County Park Coastal Development Permit, which you approved on October twenty-sixth of last year. At that time, you included a condition of approval that required the County Parks Department to bring a lighting plan for the park to you for your consideration. Just to refresh your memory, the project site is located on the south side of Tenetus Creek and west of Correo Highway. Martins Creek lies to the north of the project site and San Gregorio State Beach lies approximately two miles to the south of the project. At the October Planning Commission meeting, the Commission expressed concerns regarding potential impacts to nighttime visual resources due to proposed pathway lighting that was shown on the project plans. The applicant's plans reference lighting for the proposed park but lacked sufficient detail to allay the Commission's concerns. With the desire to move the project forward, the Commission placed a condition on the project requiring the Parks Department to bring back a detailed lighting plan for your consideration. In response, Parks submitted a memo outlining their plan, which is included as attachment B of your staff memo. The Parks Department is proposing to use small LED lights. Small LED lights, which will be embedded in the underside of the handrails, to be constructed along the ADA accessible path. The LED lights will be set to only emit approximately one foot candle of light, which is the California Building Code requirement for egress paths out of buildings, including movie theaters. By comparison, interior lighting in a home typically operates in the five to forty-foot candle range. The lights will be activated by a manual switch at the Parks Department as the Parks Department intends to turn off the pathway lights as part of its daily closing routine. In addition, there will be a timer which will automatically turn off the system as a failsafe to ensure no lights are left on overnight. The applicant is proposing to set the timer for two hours after activation. No other lighting is proposed for the park in order to ensure minimal impacts to visual resources. And I forgot to point out the the highlighted pathways, the area that where the lighting will be will be placed on the site. Sorry. The LCP, the LCP policy most pertinent to this lighting plan is policy eight point eighteen, which deals with excuse me, which deals with design of new development. Specifically, it requires new development to be as unobtrusive as possible. In this instance, the LED lighting fixtures will be embedded on the underside of the pathway's hand railing as shown in this product spec sheet. Exterior lighting will be limited to the minimum necessary for for safety. The handrail will be roughly waist height, so the intensity of light can be kept low as opposed to if it were mounted on traditional light posts, which stand seven to eight feet above the ground. And LED lights will be set to transmit at the yellow end of the color spectrum, which is more amenable to nighttime outdoor use. And we have an example here of the some lighting at the Red Rocks Amphitheater in Colorado, and you can see the lighting going up the stairs there. That's similar to what the Parks Department is hoping to replicate for this pathway as well. Lighting a shield to confine direct rays to the project parcel. It is the intention of the plan to focus the light downwards so that they only illuminate a small area at each light location. You can see the example here from Red Rocks Amphitheater. One aspect of the overall project that relates to this lighting and has not been brought up before is the wall that future landscaping will provide in breaking up and shielding these lighting fixtures when they are in use. The applicant's landscape plan calls for the planting of a number of oak trees along the alignment of the path. Once these reach maturity, they help reduce the visibility of lighting from off-site locations. Additionally, the existing grove of cypress trees on the north side of the existing driveway will help reduce visibility of the lights when viewed from the north. Upon consideration of all these elements, staff believes that the proposed lighting plan complies with policy eight point eighteen of the county LCP and recommends its approval. Are there any questions I can answer for the Commission at this time? I know the applicant is also here to answer any questions she may have.
Thank you, Mike. You have summarized it very well. Forums, do Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Ketchum?
The, I don't know if this is for the applicant or if you can answer it. I just, will the service road between the parking area and the mid bluff area be open as a more direct trail for pedestrians who prefer that?
For actual, of the first, of course, for verification of that.
She's nodding her head.
Yeah.
I can cover some more detail on that. I have a few just overview points to go over for the lighting plan overall, and I can answer that. Commissioner Ketchum, as one of the talking points as well, that is. If that's all right.
If it's okay with the Commissioner, we can have her present her point. Go ahead, please. Please state your name.
Hannah Wormshaw, Assistant Director for the San Mateo County Parks Department.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So yeah, in addition to the details that my caller provided regarding the lighting plan, I did just want to take a few minutes to share a few additional points regarding the proposed lighting plan. So we, in response to the comments that we received at the October twenty-seventh Commission Hearing for the Coastal Development Permit, you know, we heard a number of comments from the public and the Commissioners regarding the proposed lighting plan and the desire for the park to be rural in character and for the lighting to not impact the dark sky and just other comments regarding the impacts lighting may have on park users or wildlife. And you know, we're seeking to strike a balance between, you know, that coastal rural character and what we heard through the public engagement process for designing the park where there was a very high priority on public access and accessibility for people of all ages and abilities. And that this park is, as far as we're aware, one of the only coastal parks that has been designed in a way to maximize the accessibility for all. And so this modification that we've made to the lighting plan is really to strike that balance between the concerns that we heard and the amount of onsite lighting and safety that that is proposed. Okay. So the key changes, you know, we heard concern that the amount of lighting onsite, you know, regarding the total proposed lighting onsite. And so key changes include removing the proposed lighting in the mid bluff area as well as the lighting that's at the ranger station. And so what is proposed is only restricted to the pedestrian pathway that connects the parking lot and the mid bluff, which is shown in the red dash line. Those other areas that have the blue dashed around it is where lighting is no longer proposed. And we really, you know, changed this so that we could focus on the this lighting along the pedestrian path, which traverses through a heavily vegetated portion of the park up about a thirteen hundred foot distance between the mid bluff and the parking lot and about a hundred feet of elevation gain. And the assumption that many park visitors will stay until sunset and will be walking back to their vehicles during twilight or dusk hours and in low light conditions. And Mike covered this as well, but the light intensity that we're looking at is this one foot candle level, which is essentially equivalent to what you would experience at twilight in terms of the amount of light that is let off by these lights. And so, you know, we heard these concerns that lighting would be on all night or impact the the dark sky on the coast. And so I just wanted to highlight that it will be a low level, one foot candle light emitted from these pathway lights and that these would be primarily operated by a switch to manually shut these lights off at night. And they would have a sensor that would turn the lights on once the light, ambient light is in a you know, darker level around dusk. And then the default operation for the park would be that the rangers manually shut the lights off completely once they're done closing the park for the night. But as mentioned, as a failsafe, there would also be a timer so that it would ensure that if that were missed for any reason, they would shut off automatically after two hours after the time of initial activation. And so there would essentially be no chance that their lights would remain on overnight and they would not activate in the early hours of the morning or overnight at any other, at any other time. So they would be off when the park is closed to visitors. And this is just showing again the photometric plan, and this shows, you know, the way in which the lights are positioned on the rails and the one foot candle lighting limits the shine of the light just to the footpath itself. So there's no horizontal glare and no uplighting that comes from these lights, so it's only shining directly down onto the footpath. And there's no glare that comes out sideways or upwards from the light and the way that they're positioned. And that's what's shown in the lines along the path. The red color shows kind of the limit of that one foot candle light in terms of where it would shine. And then this is again showing the mounting within the handrail and the lighting would not generate any heat within the handrail, so there wouldn't be any concern of like hot to touch or any of the lighting on the handrail. And just showing this again, we also heard concern that there would be visibility of the lights on site beyond the footpath itself. And so this image does show a good example of how it does not bleed out into adjacent areas. And so for those who are down on the beach looking up towards the bluff in lower light levels, we would not the lighting would not be visible from that vantage point. Or if you're out on the water on a boat looking towards the shore, the lighting would also not be visible and it would not create that glare or uplighting. The rock is lit up with an uplight, and so that is not what we're proposing. We're looking at these downward facing lights that only shine on the pedestrian pathway. Additionally, we had heard concern about the impacts of lighting on people and wildlife. And so we did review other research regarding lighting and through these plans included specifications that the warmth of the lighting would be on, you know, the warmer end of the scale around three thousand Kelvin, which is preferable for most wildlife species. And it's consistent with standards from the American Medical Association on recommendations for outdoor lighting. And it's also in terms of the wavelength, also on the appropriate scale to minimize impacts to wildlife or to park users in terms of the, you know, sort of the brightness or the temperature of that light. And then, you know, to respond to Commissioner Ketchum's question about the access road, the desired primary path of travel for park users between the parking lot and the mid bluff will be the pedestrian pathway. We want to keep the drive aisle and the access road open for park ranger vehicles or emergency vehicles as needed. We aren't going to be citing any park users or you know, really enforcing people to not use the drive out. It is preferred that they take that more direct, steep path up. But we will be encouraging users to use the pedestrian path. And that would be the the way in which access is signed to access the mid bluff as well as, you know, the most you know, low grade, low slope overall access point for people to leave the park or access the park. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Well, thank you. It was, um, I appreciate being able to see the lighting plan and understand this better and that the lighting areas have been induced and confined to the pathway. My question about the service road is that, you know, most parks that have service roads are also, those are also trails and that I could imagine that most people coming up from the beach with their back to the beach and it's getting dark would prefer a much shorter route, which would be the service road. You know, that was the, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have any lighting planned for the service road. And like I mentioned, we're not going to be actively preventing people from using that. Our hope is that the, you know, the way we have signage and the way that the lighting is set up, it is like the more accessible and preferred route for people walking between the mid bluff and the parking lot and, you know, for those that are you know, needing a more accessible route of access. This is definitely the better option in terms of overall grade or difficulty or sort of level of exertion that would be needed to traverse this path. And you know, we would have signage directing people to use this path as well.
So you were going to be discouraging using the service road. It's just, I was no way encouraging lighting on the service road, just saying that. You know, I can understand anybody wanting to take that trail and see the views on the way down. But then, you know, you're just going to your car. It seems like it's a lot shorter to, you know, that was my only reason for that comment.
Yeah, yeah. And again, we will we will be encouraging people to use the path and directing people to that path with signage, but we do. We're not going to be actively, you know, blocking people from using the service road.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Cardis.
No questions. Yeah, I have a question. At what time does the park close throughout the year? Is it after sunset or before, I mean, before sunset?
It changes seasonally, but throughout the year, it's usually time to occur right around sunset. So it shifts. You know, I think with the time change, we'll be switching the hour of closing, you know, through the winter, it's five PM when the sun sets close to five. And then through the summer months, the closing time gets later. But usually it is timed seasonally to coincide with sunset, depending on when that is and when the time changes.
Okay. So you say when, so when the rangers leave or they can just turn it off manually. Then there's the automatic shut off in case it, someone forgets. I'm trying to understand that, does that automatic turn off switch, does it trigger like automatically a two-hour window afterwards? Or is it as smart enough to know? Because you could have the smart switches that that actually adjust for the time in the year. So.
And so the lights would activate based off light level. And so as it's approaching sunset and the light is starting to dim, that would be the activation for the lights to come on. It has a sensor for light level, and so that would be the trigger for when that two-hour clock on the timer would start once that initial activation starts. And so that would occur as it's approaching sunset, once the light start to, light levels start to lower. And then it would have a two-hour timer from that initial point of activation as the automatic shut off. But as part of the closing operations, it would be there, be an operational manual switch to make sure when the rangers are leaving site that it's actually shut. So likely with the majority of the time, it would be shut off once the gates are shut and the rangers are leaving site for the day.
Got it. Okay, that's what I had for questions. Thanks.
Yeah, it looks like a good plan. It was interesting reading about it, all the details in the report. And it's good to have a timer also on it so that in case it doesn't shut off automatically, the timer will take care of it. So the ranger actually lives on the premises, is that?
So there's a ranger residence proposed for the park as part of the project, but there is no current ranger residing on site. But once the residence is constructed, then there would be an onsite ranger.
And they may need additional lighting there at that time when that may be a separate.
Yeah, we don't have any exterior lighting proposed for the ranger residence in the plan. And we, there would be interior lighting for the residence, but that would be you know, limited to what's inside that, the residence.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your. Okay. So if there are no more questions for you, thank you. Is that I guess she was the applicant, right? So is there any public who would like to speak on this? Janet, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker, Lenny Roberts.
If Roberts could. Yeah.
Good morning again. Lenny Roberts, I'm speaking for Green Foothills. And I just wanted to thank Hannah and Parks Department and your consultants for coming up with a really well-described plan that minimizes but minimizes the amount of lighting and particularly stray lighting that could be harmful to wildlife as well as unnecessarily lighting up this, this place that is so remote. Darkness is really one of the, one of the, you know, conditions that we humans don't think about often enough. So thank you very much. I think, I think you really struck a good balance in this, in this revised plan. And I also wanted to just point out to the Commission and staff that there's a bill in the legislature this year, AB thirty-eight authored by Lee that is going to, if it passes, it will require that all state-owned or leased land, including state parks, will be new, any new, anytime they do revisions to the buildings or new or anytime they do revisions to the buildings or new or, or parks or new facilities. They'll be required to have, be compliant with dark skies provisions. So you are actually leading the way here for, I, I think it's, it'll be a good model for other parks, state parks particularly up and down the coast, as well as county parks, of course. So thank you very much for listening to those concerns in the Parks Department and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. This was the last speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts, for bringing to our attention about your bill. We'll be looking out for it. So since we have no more public speakers, we'll close the public hearing at this time. And I'll open it up for, for Commissioners deliberation. Commissioner Ketchum.
Do we want a motion to approve the lighting plan? I, I'd be ready to make that motion if you like.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I am in support of the project at this, as it is now, this time. So, yeah.
Is your speaker on? Is your microphone? Would you like to repeat your support?
Thank you. The Park Department is a wonderful organization and they always have listened not only to this commission, but people everywhere and taking it serious consideration. So thank you for listening to all of us.
Commissioner Serrano Quan, no comment. So we have a motion.
I move to, to approve the lighting plan for Tanias Creek County Park, P L N twenty twenty one zero zero four eight five.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Commissioner Serrano Quan.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion. Congratulations. Good project. Thank you. So we move on to the, to item three. Our long range work plan. Is there anything to read into the records information session on the long range work plan for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four?
Yes, we just have someone to Parks Department and our, today our presenter will be Barack Singh.
Good morning, everybody. Commissioner Gupta, Chairperson Gupta and Commissioners. As Janet mentioned, my name is Hudson. I'm the Planning Services Manager at Planning and Building. And what I'm going to present is a, just a brief presentation on the long range, long range work plan for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. So if, if you can just give me a minute, let me share my screen and make sure that you can see the presentation.
We can see your presentation up here.
Just let me know if you can see the presentations. All right. So with that, I am going to move things forward. As part of the packet, the Commissioners would have received are a set of tables. The first was a summary of key projects that will be the content of this presentation. The other much larger set of tables has additional projects with more detail that cover status, staff lead and other collaborative departments and agencies. The projects, the projects are broadly organized under four categories, namely state mandates and general plan updates. Local ordinances and regulation updates, community plans and studies, and then lastly, transportation plans and studies. All of the projects have also been given a priority ranking based upon the schedule, such as a state mandates on completing general plan updates and or the availability of staff. This is the key projects table that you must have received in the packet and we will be speaking to these in the following slides. So first off is the state mandated, mandated work that we need to do. Currently, staff is involved in three general plan updates. General plan element updates, the housing element, the safety element, and the environmental justice or E J for short element. The commission is, as the commission is aware, we are in the final stages of the housing element that had been circulated as a draft for public comment last November, December. Planning and Housing Department staff compiled the comments and have submitted the draft document along with the public comments to the State Housing and Community Development Department for the mandatory ninety day review. Both the safety and E J elements were initiated in the second half of last year as a combined effort between multiple jurisdictions. For the safety element, the county has teamed up with eight jurisdictions and for the E J element, it has teamed up with two jurisdictions. Consultants for both of these have been selected and the contracts for both should have, should be finalized in the next couple of months. Both of these elements were scheduled to be, are, are, were scheduled to be complete and adopted by the end of twenty twenty four. However, since the preparing of this work plan, the schedule for the safety element has been updated and it is to be completed by the spring of twenty twenty five. Just for your information, for the safety element, the county is teaming up with Atherton, Belmont, Burlingame, East Palo Alto, Half Moon Bay, San Bruno, Brisbane and Pacifica. And for the E J element, we're teaming up with Burlingame and East Palo Alto. Next on the list is the community plans and studies. Under the community plans and studies, the department is primarily working on two North Fair Oaks projects. The first North Fair Oaks community, the first is the North Fair Oaks Community Plan Ten Year Review. This review was initiated by the county administration in late May of, late May of twenty twenty two at the behest of Supervisor Slocum. The department hired a consultant firm to conduct the appraisal with the help of the department and county to under, with the help of the, of the department and the county to understand the plan's impact on the community as well as help us getting direction on the way forward with the community's evolved priorities within the community plan framework. The consultants at present are conducting interviews with departments and community leaders and will be engaging the community through survey tools and other meanings, other means. The review should be completed by the end of the year. The second North Fair Oaks effort is the phase four rezoning where the existing R three multi-family zoning is being updated to commercial mixed use along Huntington and Blenheim avenues as outlined in the vision of the community plan. The project is in the Sequo evaluation phase and is also scheduled to be completed by the year's end. It is also scheduled to be presented to the planning commission, most likely this June. Following along, the next one is transportation plans and studies in collaboration with D P W. The department has been involved in the following key transportation planning projects. The first is a comprehensive update of the county's traffic impact assessment or T I A requirements for new projects. And this includes the effort. This includes updating the county standards regarding the evaluation of transportation impacts under SEQA, which was brought upon by the state's inclusion of the metric of vehicle miles traveled and the abandonment of level of service from SEQA evaluation. The ever, the effort will help the county incorporate new strategies for projects to reduce travel demand through travel demand management or T D M strategies. It would also account for mitigating localized congestion outside the realm of SEQA evaluations. In addition, the department is in a collaborative effort with D P W and the S M C T A to prepare key safety and congestion improvement plans for state route one in Moss Beach. The project is looking at roadway improvements between intersection and roadway improvements between Cypress Avenue and Sixteenth Street. This will improve safety crossings across highway one as well as add pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure along that segment. The final alter, alternatives will be provided to Caltrans to consider for implementation. Oops, sorry. Slippery fingers here. I think this is the right slide that I was in. Yes, the, the third slide, third on this slide is the county's joint effort with the city of Half Moon Bay in applying for a grant with S M C T A to jointly develop a travel demand management plan that will encourage the use of sustainable transportation options and enhanced mobility and will work towards ensuring that all modes of transportation are safe, reliable and convenient while discouraging driving and as well as managing congestion and reducing vehicle miles traveled. The project should kick off next month and is scheduled to be completed by the end of twenty twenty four. And then lastly, but not least, we have the ordinance and regulation updates. The department will be prioritizing the following updates for the upcoming two years. Should more staff availability, availability increase, the department will add more updates to this priority list. The department is working on, in collaboration with Public Works, Parks and the Office of Sustainability on the updates to the significant inherited street regulations. This will improve management of individual trees and tree canopy in the unincorporated county, consistent with the general plan and local coastal program. Our goal is, is to finalize the draft updates before summer and then consult with the Coastal Commission to get their buy-in before preparing the environmental documents and subsequent, and subsequent committee and planning commission hearings. The goal is to complete complete this and take it to the board and the Coastal Commission and for Coastal Commission certification by the end of the year. The second here is the Coastal Zone Child Care Ordinance Update. It's in the final stages and is slated to for approval by the Board of Supervisors. I believe in the next Board of Supervisors meeting or the following meeting after that one. And lastly, we have the depart, we have the mid coast C one zone height standards. The effort is to further clarify how heights are, are to be measured particularly on parcels with slopes and grades. This effort should start later this summer and should be completed by the end of twenty twenty four. And to end the presentation, we also wanted to list all the projects and efforts completed in the last year. These eight efforts are the Connect the Coastide Plan, the local roadway safety plan, the A D O coastal zone regulation update, the local hazard mitigation plan, the commercial cannabis ordinance update, the green infrastructure plan, the community climate action general plan of element update, and lastly, the density bonus bayside regulations update. All of these were completed last year. And with that, this brings me to the end of our presentation. The myself and the director and relevant staff are available to respond should the Commissioners have any questions. Thank you.
Chad Gupta, if I could just take a moment to thank Bharat for the presentation and the long range planning team. They are a strong and mighty team of four people with Bharat at the helm. You have met many of them, I believe, in the past. Chanda Singh, our transportation planner will be returning after being on leave for quite some time. So we're anxious to have her back. You've met Will Gibson before. He is our housing element expert and implementer. And Katie Faulkner, one of the not so new anymore, but has joined the long range planning team and has been working on some of the very important projects that were mentioned regarding the safety element update, the E J element update. And she's also been working with Summer on Plan Princeton. So just wanted to thank the team and let you know we're available for questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Bharat, and, and thank you, Steve, on that. Good presentation, Bharat. But we, we would like to also see your presentation included on the website. Because that was, even though it's tabulated in the staff report, but I found it very helpful.
Yes, we will make that happen.
So we could start with Commissioner questions. Commissioner, Commissioner Ramirez?
There are no questions at this time.
Commissioner.
No question either, sorry.
No. Commissioner Hanson?
First, I want to thank you for the presentation. It's a little different format from previous years. And I found it really easy for me. I really liked that. So that, that was a home run for me. So what I gave me an idea of how, also how you were thinking and putting things together. Like I said, it was a whole, whole different way of looking at it. And one of the comments, it was just as a comment, it was going through the transportation things. And we're looking at the, oh, it's section, it's called Transportation Demand Management and Ordinance Program. You know, to me, that's really going to be critical going forward. Whether we like it or not, that we're going to be an urban area. You know, we thought, keep thinking of ourselves as suburban, but that, those days are basically a law are lost. And how we think where the transportation corridors are going to be, you know, in my mind, you know, if I lived long enough. I'm at the end of the cycle now, but you know, I would really worry about having, not having fixed rail on the east side of one oh one. So there was two parallel corridors because really if you live in Foster City or Redwood Shores, you know, you don't want to cross the freeway, then get to the rail, you know, that's just too, a step too far. You know, if we really, you know, in a community of, right now, what, five, seven million in the Bay Area? You know, and we're, we're going to start looking like London. I don't know if you've been to London, but London is, you know, four to six stories. No matter where you are, but it has viable transportation. It's on the streets with the buses, it's but it also has the underground, which is one of the models in the world. And, you know, we had a nice opportunity to the old Southern Pacific line, which we're gonna make maximizing out. But to go forward, to handle the population growth that we are, if we don't plan out further, you know, we're really will be building future slums. Because if you can't move people, these become isolated pockets where things don't happen. Because I can't work, you know, the marginalized people get shoved in those areas. So this is why I always worry about where we build things, you know, we're not building future slums in there. And the most critical element is the last mile. And I think when I worked at Stanford, this was very nice for me because I could take the train from Hillsdale to Palo Alto. But, but then getting from Palo Alto to Stanford, Stanford met every train. They have their own margarita system. And you know, on those nice days, I always walked. Today, you know, you know, when you got seventy mile per hour winds, you don't. You know, when you got seventy mile per hour winds, you don't want to walk. And I don't even want to drive. But, you know. That last mile is critical and made out all the difference in the world. So when we start thinking about. Transportation demand, the last mile is, you know, if you're a certain business over a certain size, you need to band together. And maybe have a van pull system that circulates between the transportation nodes. That gets you from your business to those nodes, and I think that's something we going forward. We got really seriously consider, and since this is part of your element there. That's what I just want to throw my two cents out. You gave me a lot to think about on other issues and. It was just a wonderful presentation. Thank you. No more questions.
Yeah, I have a number of questions. Let me start with the LCP updates to address sea level rise was listed under. A future project section in the last few years, but now it's missing. And I I just I have two quotes here regarding sea level rise from the twenty twenty one Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mitigating the impacts from sea level rise will take resources and tough land use decisions. Over the next thirty years, starting immediately. And the other quote is, the county should consider the adoption of higher regulatory standards to mitigate impacts. Of sea level rise on redevelopment. Background studies have been completed, we have sea level rise vulnerability assessment for the North Coast completed in twenty eighteen. For the South Coast in twenty twenty two. The coastal regional sediment management plan from Pillar Point down to Santa Cruz was completed in twenty fifteen. The Coastal Commission recommends a hundred year timeframe for residential development when evaluating coastal hazards. Including the effect of sea level rise, the county is still looking at only a fifty year timeframe. It it just at our last meeting, this came up, and it's not about the life of the house, it's. The land under the house that we have to be looking at and. Our best opportunities are slipping away as we continue to process shoreline development applications by out of date standards. So back to the beginning, why was, why is this no longer on the plan and? Your thoughts?
Sure, well, I'll start and I'll let Bharat follow if he's got anything to add. So Plan Princeton is still on there and Plan Princeton is, I think, the forefront of kind of. Sea level rise planning that we're doing here in the county and we're collaborating. With partners such as One Shoreline in that effort, and I think, you know, once we get that completed, we will have a really good jumping off point to. Initiate a broader update to the LCP. I think at this point, it's a matter of, you know. Prioritizing the area that we think is most susceptible to impacts from sea level rise and erosion, which I think is Princeton. And then to use that learning to. Do a larger scale effort once we free up some resources from the other important projects that we're working on. Bharat, do you have anything to add?
I will just reiterate the point that we have these really stipulated. Timeframes for these elements, and that's what is basically consuming a lot of our resources. And as Steve mentioned, you know. Plan Princeton, we are actually looking very carefully in in pivoting and focusing more on the effects of climate change. We hopefully should move that a little forward, we're we're taking a bit of a pause trying to understand the impacts because. That too is a bit of a moving target right now. So once we have some. The resources available, we will basically take that as our. Sort of lynchpin to move things forward, to understand and study stuff and see how we move forward with that. We're also. Looking at what our recommendations coming through for the different jurisdictions along the coast, and we'll start to work on that. But at this point, the focus is primarily trying to get these, you know. State mandated elements out of the way because they're on a timeline. So we we hope to update the commission maybe later in the summer in when we. Have some reevaluations of resources and we can come back and let you know. Where we're moving with Plan Princeton in a little more detail.
And I would just add with regard to the state mandated elements, the safety element, of course, brings up. Issues related to health and safety due to sea level rise concerns, and I think that too will provide. A good policy basis for us to pursue updates to the implementing regulations like our zoning. But at this point, I think, you know, starting at the policy level with the safety element and digging into the. Technical issues at Plan Princeton is our plan for moving forward.
So Plan Princeton, my next comment, the other agencies in the table there are listed as Office of Sustainability and One Shoreline. And my concern is, what about the Harbor District? So the. Harbor District objected to One Shoreline taking the lead on shoreline issues and. One Shoreline has dropped their two year effort, had a consultant do this whole plan. To develop and bring forward a long term proposal to address the impacts of that the harbor breakwaters have had. So. It seems. I mean, I don't know what the balance is there now. It's like the county you've been in touch with One Shoreline and One Shoreline has been. Hired a consultant and put effort into this. Plan, which I'm dying to see, but it hasn't been released, can't see that. And the Harbor District only talks about it. I don't even think they've seen it, and yet they're already opposed. I just. And then. Of course, is Plan Princeton is my, you know, that's just been the shoreline in front of the. Industrial area, it's not the whole dilemma with the harbor itself. And. And it's it's a very specific and three block portion of shoreline, which. Is inside the harbor, so may not, you know, you know, the basics of the studies that we've accumulated over the last five or ten years. There are, you know, we have the commission here has seen a bunch of new homes right on the bluff. Along Moss Beach north of there, you know, and then south of there and Miramar that are not within the harbor, this is a different, yeah, so I don't understand. Or maybe. How the county gets somehow, obviously, the Harbor District. Thinks they're the lead agency for Princeton Shoreline now, manager said that, so. If that could get sorted out, clearly, they. And also I ask, I have a question on the work status in the table. It's I don't quite understand, it says climate impact assessment draft review underway, you need to make. Need to meet with management to get direction on project due to significant climate impact. I don't know who's meeting with what management or what that really means.
Well, I think that refers to a staff note, you know, I think it's brought indicated in his presentation. The predictions regarding the extent of. Climate change and sea level rise had been changing over time. And the assumptions with which we entered into the Plan Princeton project have changed significantly. And I think I've mentioned to the commission before that with the increased. Level of seal rise predicted that our ability to include some sort of. Shoreline protection, if that is a desire, becomes much more constrained. And so. The staff that's been working hard on making sure we understand not only. The these predictions, but also the technical guidance coming from Office of Planning and Research in the California Coastal Commission. Has, you know, caused them to need to consult with me and Bharat and others about. So what will be our approach in light of this new information? We have been actively meeting and we are moving forward with that, so I think perhaps that note is somewhat outdated. But yeah, the next steps will be to. Firm up what our proposed approach will be and to bring that to the public and to the advisory boards for your review and comment.
So I had heard about. You had sent a document on the proposed sea level rise figures for Princeton to the Coastal Commission. In twenty nineteen and then there they had a comprehensive reply in twenty twenty, and thank you for sharing that with me. Is there anything new on that theme as that conversation with them and working on that? That that could be made available, I'd be interested to see it.
Yeah, I'll have to work with staff. I think everything's been in draft form. I I don't think that we've gone back to meet with the commission staff to kind of refresh our approach. But that is due to happen and we will be happy to share that information with you when we have it.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you. So is the plant, the intent to complete? Plan Princeton this calendar year that looks sort of like that on the table, but I wasn't sure.
I think that's going to be a difficult thing to accomplish. What I would like to see is to make sure that we get something out for the public. To review, particularly as it relates to our approach towards addressing sea level rise. But I think it's likely to extend into twenty twenty four in terms of completion.
So this. Long term plan for the breakwater. That was commissioned by One Shoreline. That nobody gets to see, is there any way? You could help facilitate? That that I don't know, under, I don't care if it's. Here or at the MCC or the Harbor District or whatever, but couldn't that be presented to the public so we know what they're talking about when they say they're opposed?
I don't have access to the draft document, draft documents, or, you know. Not subject to Public Records Act requests and. The Harbor District is an independent district that has the ability to share or not share its draft documents.
Even theirs, they don't have it either, One Shoreline.
One Shoreline has it, again, an independent district. I feel good about the partnership that's developed between planning and building staff and One Shoreline. And if we can get access to that document in a form that we can share, we will do that.
Thank you. Okay, so. The bulk propane yard on Airport Street is not in this. Work plan and last September, the Board of Supervisors voted five to zero to deny an appeal. And directed the Planning and Building Department to add to its work plan a proposal to amortize out the existing uses by rezoning the parcel. So we haven't heard any more about that, but. The and of course, this, when you talk about rezoning, you would think, oh, Plan Princeton, but this. It's rather urgent in that. It's equity issue, safety, just is there? Is the planning and building still? Trying to go ahead with this directive from the board or where does that stand?
Yes, we did intend to fulfill that directive, and as you noted, our intent was to include that with the Plan Princeton, it is in the project area.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Yes, that that that. From my perspective, that is the most efficient and effective way to comply with the directive from the board is to include. That. Change in the Plan Princeton zoning amendments. If it becomes necessary, the question that's in on my mind is. You know, that was a grandfathered use essentially, and now that it is no longer active and has been up for sale. I think there comes a certain point where that use becomes abandoned and cannot be reestablished. So given the current situation, the need to. Amortize that use out. May be. Move if the use is abandoned and can't be reestablished. Now, that's a difficult legal question that I wouldn't put Mr. Fox on the spot now because I think there's a variety of factors that goes into considering that, but. We will be looking at that and. We just in response to comments that were made at the last meeting have been. Actively attempting to try and get in touch with AmeriGas to address issues related to the fence and others and. So we we hope to be able to provide you with an update at the next meeting in terms of. What's going to happen with the fence and also long term with the use of that site. I think in the event that a new owner would want to come in and reestablish that use there, that could. Be. A factor that would cause us to bump this amortization process up to the top of the list. It's not clear to me that that's the case or the intended use of the site by the future owner, and I don't think we'll know until. A future owner comes in, so it certainly a fair question and something that's on our mind, and I think we'll have to. See what the next couple of months reveals about. What's going to happen with that site? I think the longer it's for sale and not being used for. Providing that gas propane, thank you. Then the the more likely that the use becomes abandoned and can't be reestablished.
Well, that would be good to know at what point. Because basically they haven't done anything officially, the tank gauge reads empty, but they could fill that anytime they want.
Yes, I mean, from what we understand, they have no intent to reactivate that use at this point.
Okay, so I I understand that that it may be a moot point, but I guess I would. Be eager to see that. Settled and saying, okay, this is, this is not going to happen there again, you can. Calm down about that, but as far as zoning changes that were, so we had Plan Princeton, which actually was initiated because the. Fish processor there had too many people working on site, this. And then it expanded into what it is. Okay, so the zoning, the. The industrial area of Princeton, the the dense part, okay, that's. God zoning changes, but you perhaps you want to. Delay them until you work out the shoreline thing, but somehow it seems like if we we need to separate it because isn't it the shoreline thing is delaying this whole thing the last five years? And we have not only the issue with the rezoning of the propane parcel, but there are. The industrial zone now County Parks. Is and the whole bluff is is going to be changed from PAD to RMC, and there's a parcel of Pillar Ridge I sent, I think I copied you on that about. That's should be zoned, rezoned MH, I mean, there's just really simple, no brainer zoning of that whole. Area north of that that could maybe be separated off and get done. Rather than, you know, there's even single family zoning up on the bluff still.
Right. No matter how simple a zoning change might seem, an LCP amendment is never simple. And we are really striving to use our limited resources wisely. If the parcels on the bluff are owned by an open space agency that has no intent of using it for residential purposes, that becomes a lower priority for the department. So. No, I don't think it's likely that we would split it into two pieces.
Okay. The. My questions are getting simpler and simpler as I go down the list, so the protected tree ordinance, if that doesn't wrap up. Obviously, that won't wrap up by the summer, we you'll be renewing the that permanent exemption for removal of certain high has fire hazard trees when it expires in July.
I've been. Working carefully with County Fire, Cal Fire in making that determine. Working carefully with um County Fire, Cal Fire in making that determination. Um at this point, we haven't discussed renewal of that. I think it's highly likely, but at this point, I I haven't had a conversation with Cal Fire to say for sure.
Okay, good. Appreciate letting me know.
Sure.
Uh and uh then as far as where I started with the um future projects that never really made it into the table, there was also. Two things there grading and parking regulations updates. Are they still uh somewhere in the? Lower list as needing to be done? I mean, you didn't decide that, oh, they're okay the way they are?
No, it um, yes, the change in that list shouldn't reflect that uh we don't have a desire to do it. It's more about. Allocating resources in a manner that we think we can accomplish. I think one of. The problems we've had in the past is being over ambitious and saying we can do more than we can actually get done. And so we're trying to be more real realistic in this work plan and while that those are still future projects that we intend to pursue. Um they're not going to happen within the next two years, which is really focus of this work plan.
So there is no. Plan to. Hire more people.
Um so actually, we are, you know, doing our budget planning right now and um. I have submitted requests for additional resources and we'll see how that plays out.
Okay, thanks. I just I noticed that we had the printout of this. I sent this about the uh. Height limit measuring and this was just for clarification because it. I don't know, to me, maybe I'm wrong, but to me, it looks really simple. It's one sentence. Just inserted. And this is not about changing the hot maximum height. This is just how it's measured.
Yes, um and thanks for refreshing uh my memory on this. I think there is an opportunity to consolidate this request with the. Um work that's going on with the C one height changes that Barat mentioned is part of the work plan.
We're going to change the height. It's already was changed in twenty twelve. It's already down to twenty eight feet. It's just not. Measured. Uh it's got this average. It defaults to the averaging method, I think.
Uh Camille's been working with Barat on this and she's got some insight, sure.
The C one height standard update change uh that Barat referenced is what we said.
So in other words, we intend to do it.
Yeah, basically in twenty twelve, these the height was lowered thirty six, twenty eight in these in the C one, the R three, R R three. Whatever um. And the PAD and RMCC, but they neglected to add the definition of how you measure the height. And we would like to have that consistent. It's just confused, that's all. So I know changing height limit, that's bigger deal. This is not that. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you. So my questions are um. I think. And I went through, I went through the whole list of all the. Um. Items that are planned for the uh for the long range and the. The there's a lot. There's a lot that's being planned and that's great uh there. Um. And then I came across this footnote saying that. Uh there'll be. The one with the star asterisks on there are the ones that would be coming to. Planning Commission in. Maybe next two years or maybe longer. So. So there are many, many of those on here and I would like to point out to some that I am. Interesting interested in as to how soon or in what form we may be seeing those. So starting with page one. The. Is this housing element update? Is there anything remaining on there that would be coming to us?
No, not at this point. We need to complete the process with the state and the Board of Supervisors.
Right, okay. Uh because we already uh looked at it. Now it's with the Board of Supervisors, right? Um. And the next one I have here is it says. Gen uh I'm I'm sorry, the. I printed it out and it's very, very, very small. So uh this one says general plan conformity requests.
Yes, so um in addition to. Projects that update policies and regulations, the long range team handles certain regular um on ongoing programs. One of those programs is carrying out. The general plan conformity reviews that we must carry out when a. Public agency is doing a an acquisition or a project within the county. So you're familiar with these general plan conformity reports that come to you for those specific projects, be it acquisitions. Or other types of um developments and so uh we will continue to bring those forward to the planning commission.
And just just from my understanding, are these project based or this these are general plans?
No, these they're project based determinations as to whether or not the project conforms to the general plan.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
Perhaps. Mister Fox has.
That's correct, but I think an important um, an important thing to understand about general plan conformity reports is that they're mostly informational. They're not really part of the arc of the approval process. They generally relate to projects that the entity has the right to carry out. And it's simply a matter for the planning commission to understand, okay, a public agency is going to build something. It doesn't comply with the general plan. I guess we need to update the general plan to reflect the reality that they're going forward with it. But it's not really an approval or disapproval process. Um so it can sometimes cause some confusion. People will sometimes speak. On the project before the commission when fundamentally what we're doing is analyzing the project and then stating whether or not. It complies with the general plan or conflicts with it just for information purposes.
Okay. Okay, so so you're saying it's public agency. It's not a particular applicant uh. Building a project um.
Well, i- i- it is, it is a public entity building a project. They're applying for the report. They're not applying for the project. Um the government code just imposes this obligation on the entity to seek. A report from the planning agency about whether the project complies with the general plan and there's a timeline for doing that. Um. So there is an applicant. It's just that they're not applying for a permit or an entitlement. They're just. Complying with their duty to come to you and say, will you please report to me whether or not my project complies with the general plan? And then it's informational to you and informational to them. Um it's an opportunity sometimes to give some feedback about how impacts to a project might be mitigated. Uh particularly with as it relates to the general plan, but um we, you know, the the staff reports generally describe what the standard is and we try to be as transparent as possible. So that people don't believe that somehow the the commission is giving an up or down vote on whether the project happens because it isn't.
Okay, I I think I understand. Thank you. Okay. Then the next next one I have here is. Uh I think I understand the zoning ordinance. Reorganization. I- i- is there? Um. Is is that something that we'll be seeing also?
Yes, it uh will need to come before the planning commission. Our intent with the zoning zoning ordinance reorganization is to modernize. The formatting and incorporate it officially as part of the county municipal code. To make sure all the cross references are correct. We don't intend for it to be a substantive. Change because we feel that this reorganization is very important in terms of making the document. Accessible online and easier to follow and by keeping it only as a non substantive amendment. Uh we will be seeking expedited um certification by the Coastal Commission because I would consider it to be a de minimis amendment.
Okay, yeah, I think so. That's. Now, uh on a uh different note. The last time you had mentioned something about uh. Farm labor housing. Is that something that would come as part of your? Uh long range planning, does that fall into uh your department?
It may. Um at this point, um we are um. Doing our best to make sure that farm worker housing is safe and we're do working on that right now. Um. I think over the long term, providing safe and adequate farm worker housing um would. Uh the uh improved, our ability to provide it would be improved if we could streamline the permitting process for such facilities. Um and so that's something we will be considering. Um you know, once again, um being. Uh most of our agricultural lands are in the coastal zone and to change the rules for permitting farm labor housing projects. Would need to go through the local coastal program amendment process. And so we have quite a bit more thinking to do about that and consultation with the Coastal Commission staff to determine. What would be feasible in that regard. Um so the short answer, it's not currently part of the work plan, but it may become part of the work plan in the future.
Thank you and um. Now. Considering the. Kind of uh whether we are going through. Uh is that going to change um? Any of the thinking that's going on with what we need to look at, like when we had all these fires, uh. There I'm sure there was uh there were some changes that would uh. Some factors that we had to consider in terms of some of our uh planning.
Yes, I think the answer is for sure because um. As we move forward with updating our safety element in the posit uh the policies related to health and safety. I think making sure that we are addressing these um. More severe storm cycles is going to be an important part of um the planning we work we do with the safety element. And you know, the way in which. Policy development then informs implementation is a process by which we develop. Our policies and our objectives and then we follow up with implementing regulations. And so the safety element will provide that jumping off point for us to establish policies and then move forward with more stringent. Regulations similar to what we were talking about with issues related to sea level rise.
Right, but as I was driving today, some of the uh fast track lanes were closed.
Yeah, ponding on roadways is a big problem, all or no doubt.
Yeah, and we depend on that so that we can get get here faster, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you and uh. So so what we see here uh in our today's reports, we are, as far as we know, we are on track. With.
Yes, and I want to, once again, I want to thank Barat and I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Hanson. I think he's really. Put a lot of thought and organization into this work plan, uh some careful thinking with the team about. You know, what's what can we accomplish within the timeframes we've laid out and so, yes, um I we were, we're gonna. Use all the resources we can to keep these things on track.
Thank you, because uh you only mentioned a handful of um. Uh stuff, but there are many more names here.
That's correct, and I would be remiss in not. Acknowledging the contributions that our current planning staff makes to the long range planning. So as you heard, Camille's been involved with the uh C one height changes. Uh Summer has been very involved with Plan Princeton and yeah, other current planners to contribute to these efforts. Um it's. It's difficult because um the current planners have a very high workload of of permitting. And you know, applicants are of course anxious to get their permits and we are have to operate on certain timeframes and so. It's um difficult for us to grab resources from current planning to put towards long range planning because they're so busy with their permitting work. However, um yeah, we're fortunate in um having um planners that are are willing and able to do that and we will. Um continue to use that resource.
Did you have any questions, Commissioner?
You know, um I think um I I don't have questions per se and I wanted to leave it for later in the comment section, but um. I mean, some things have come up as you guys have been talking. Um. First of all, I really hope that uh your budget gets approved and you can hire more people. Uh because. You know, um. This is a a pretty ambitious plan. Um and you know, having the. The right amount of people would be ideal. One is because as we keep saying, you know, uh projects keep keep uh being postponed. Um and there's a backlog on things that need to get done. And you know, people are desperate to see some solutions in in different areas. Um. So um you know, hopefully, again, because over the years, as for those have have been around here for a long time. Some of these projects have been started a long time ago, but then you you lost uh. Some staff along the way and then having to bring in new people and bring up, bring them up to speed on what you need to do. It's a challenge, uh realize that. Um. And along those lines, I wanted to say something uh with regards to this meetings and what I realized. That maybe um we need some IT people to help. Um to make sure that we coordinate um. You know, this this new technology that we're trying to implement. Oh, yes, without a doubt. We we always knew that that was going to be a challenge. Um there was. Frankly, just a lot of pressure to make it happen as soon as possible. And so here we are and we're still working on securing the resources we need to make it run as smooth as possible. Yeah, because I I really think that that we need uh, we need to, you know, flow smoothly on on things like that and. Um not have so many hiccups um or have. Train them, I I think, to make sure that they that we have things and everything flows. Um. Some of the things that um. You know, that have been uh talked about right now is like the the safety. Issues that that I think um. That need to be addressed in the county. Um that has to do with the uh now sea level rise um. Uh with the weather change, um what it's called um. That I think what what is happening this year, I think. Really um is going to push us to look. And start acting a little faster than I think we. We were expecting. Because I I think that um. Like with the storms like today, it really has um. Exposed all the vulnerabilities that we have. And I think in general, I think the um. The region needs to come up with a better approach um to all these issues that are. Um that we are confronting at this time. All right, um another thing that I liked about the the. That we are going to be looking at the general plan for North Fair Oaks revisiting after a ten year. Um since we put it together, um. It has to do for me with the issue of uh.
It has to do for me with the issue of building heights. I think it it was kind of surprising to see like in some of the recent projects that we looked at that like with the density bonus, it kind of pushed things much higher than we were expecting, I think. So I hope that, and I know that in North Fair Oaks, now that, that some of these things are finally coming into fruition and people are building, people are getting surprised. And I think there's going to be a huge pushback on the building heights that are being proposed. So I think it, we need to look back and see if, if we got it right and if we need to make some changes to that. You know. So anyway, I'll continue it later with some of the comments I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. I wanted to make sure you've got a turn to speak about North Fair Oaks. Do we have any public wanting to speak?
We do have a couple speakers on, on, online. So first we're going to call on Ms. Carrie Burke, followed by Lenny Roberts.
Good morning Chairman Gupta and the commission. I'm Carrie Burke and I do share Lenny Roberts gratitude for the Zoom meeting. Today was very challenging, still is challenging on 92. And so having the hybrid meetings is still very helpful to the public, though I miss seeing everybody in person. The presentation on the general plan update was very insightful and appreciate all the commissioners' comments and it is a big chore. And I also, with Director Monowitz, I agree that current planning takes a very important part in the information they can provide to long term planning. So where there are policy problems or also then being able to craft new policies that can be implemented with ease. And so I really appreciate all the work that our entire staff is doing on this. And just in closing, I just, I really appreciate everybody's comments, especially with Commissioner Ketchum, she really does capture a lot of our coast side issues and appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comment. Well, next call on Lenny Roberts.
Yes, good morning commissioners. Again, this is Lenny Roberts speaking for Green Foothills. I, I agree with Carrie's comments. I really appreciate the work that has gone into, you know, the annual reporting on the long, long range planning efforts and also the, the organization that, that has been provided in this one. And I really appreciate the comments and questions by the commissioners. Some of those were also comments, so I, I will not try to repeat them, but I, I certainly agree with Commissioner Ketchum's list of concerns. And I wanted to add one more thought here that sort of more overarching thought that we are facing and that the state, the state housing mandates often conflict with the need to protect public safety in some of our rural areas, but also some of the urban unincorporated communities where we have significant landslide hazards and flooding hazards and wildfire hazards and inadequate municipal services. So you know, we have very inadequate roads, we have difficult access. And also we often, in the unincorporated rural areas, we don't have you know, public sewer and water facilities. So we have to rely on onsite sewer septic systems and onsite wells, which are significant constraints, really significant constraints. And then when you add in the, you know, increased fire hazards, the, the state mandates just don't take those into account in many, in many circumstances. So and I don't know what the answer is to that, other than the public and the county has, has to be informing some of our legislators better. We all certainly are concerned about the inadequacy of affordable housing, inadequate supply of affordable housing. And the fact that much of that affordable housing is located in places that we do have that are going to be subject to extraordinary flooding hazards along the east side of Bay Shore. And in other locations where there may be other hazards. So this is definitely an equity and you know, environmental justice issue. And I don't have really an answer, other than I think people have to give much more thought to, you know, careful comprehensive planning that does provide affordable housing in locations where we have transportation and other services and that is also safe. So that's just a comment that's a little bit out of the box, but it's an overarching concern that I think is going to continue to be a very thorny challenge for us. So thank you all for all the work that you're doing and thank the staff also for this comprehensive presentation.
Thank you very much for your comment and I do not see any more hands raised.
So seeing no more other public comments, I would like to close the public hearing and open it for, for our commissioners deliberation. There's no voting required here. Do commissioners have any last minute comments to make? None. I would like to thank, I, I'll pronounce his name correctly, Bharat Singh. Thank you so much for staying up late. I know what time it is there. So thank you, Bharat. A great presentation. You have your work cut out for you and your, and, and your staff.
Appreciate it, Chairperson Gupta.
So we move on to our next item on the agenda.
Yes, Chair Gupta, that's item number four, and I do not have any correspondence to report to you today. So moving on to item five. I do not have a study session planned for the next meeting, but I acknowledge Commissioner Ketchum's request for a study session on shoreline armoring. And I will be working with staff to see if we can get that on the April 26 agenda. If that works for you, Commissioner Ketchum. We do have two items scheduled for the next meeting. They're both coastal development permits and nonconforming use permits for new homes to be developed in, one in Miramar and one in Moss Beach. Moving on to item six, the director's report. I wanted to get back to Commissioner Ketchum on the Moss Beach Chevron Station. Building permit applications have been submitted to complete the improvements to the site that were wired by the commission's action. Those, that permit application is currently under review by the Department of Public Works as well as the Planning Department to make sure that it complies with the terms of the commission's approval. And I will be happy to update you on where that review stands at the next meeting. Speaking of storm damage, it has really been a tough winter. And I wanted to share my appreciation for the many staff members throughout the county who have really had to respond. And in the planning and building department, that includes our inspectors who've had to promptly to respond to some pretty tragic events. And so I know just yesterday, we had at least four, five homes damaged by trees falling. And so our inspectors go on site to determine whether or not the home is still safe to occupy. And we do our best to help the property owners figure out what needs to happen moving forward. So I anticipate we'll have a lot more work in that regard in the coming days. And I, it's, it's not something this commission gets to see very often because it's happening from the building divisional, the building division, real time. But it's good for you all to know that we're out there doing this work. And then finally, I just wanted to inform the commission of two items that will be on next week's board of supervisors meeting. That includes our progress report in implementing the housing element. This is a requirement from the state that we do an annual report. And then we are bringing forward the planning commission's recommendation that the board of supervisors accept the modifications to the childcare ordinance that the coastal commission required for certification. And that completes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? You have no questions? So the meeting is adjourned? Nope, not yet. I take that back. Yeah.
At the Historical Resource Board, of which Camille was there with a client. And the client was frustrated with the process, the bureaucracy and the timeframe. Camille handled it superb. She gave the client dignity in the process, which is a real hard thing to do. And particularly with the question of whether to save the home, destroy the home, preserve part of the home or whatever. And she brought a real human element to a client who was very frustrated. He may not be happy with still how it turned out. But what she did was this, was a, should be noted.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. I will be sure to pass that on. I appreciate you acknowledging that.
Yeah. I'm always happy to give comments positive and negative. And if you're willing to do negative, you have to do the positive.
I appreciate it.
She would be happy to hear. She was just here. Okay. That's it. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.